Have a grade as low as thirty-nine. They feel like if they get them early enough in June, they'll start that right at the beginning of the month. They can get them to a fifty and then they'll have a chance to get to a sixty in that admin report over the summer. So they've done a lot of good work and my hat's off to Dr. Faulner and her staff for the things that they've done there. So any questions about any of this? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Now I'd like to ask Ms. Renee Mann to share HR updates related to recruitment, retention, and vacancies.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Thomas said, I would like to share a little bit of information about what's going on in the Human Resources Department. I first like to say that I work with a wonderful team and without their help, there's no way I would be able to keep this thing afloat. And that will be Ms. Scott, Ms. Patterson, Ms. McNeil, and of course in benefits, Ms. Noble. And I'd just like to publicly thank them for all the help and the support that they give me. Okay, now let's get to the report. With our efforts as far as recruitment and retention. Eh, thank you. We this year received the South Carolina Department of Education Rural Recruitment Grant. That grant totaled about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. And we have received notification that we will receive it again this year. It's a good thing to receive the grant, but it does show that we have some weaknesses. As the name implies, it's to help with recruitment and also retention. You had to have a certain turnover rate to, at a certain poverty index rate to receive the grant. But we will take those funds and we will use them in a way that will help us. And just an example of some of the things that we have used the monies for. We were able to attend thirteen job fairs this year. Of course, it was a COVID year, so the job fairs were a little different. We had to do them virtually and Ms. Scott did the majority of those job fairs. And some of those job fairs did, um, really look at diversity. And that is good because in HR, we do understand that we need to work on, uh, diversity in our district, but particularly at some certain schools. So we're working on that. With the funds, we were also able to prod- uh, not produce, we were able to purchase an online application system. Most districts, not only in our area, but across the state, have an online application process. We did not have this. We've wanted this, but it's just been a purchase that we could not afford. But due to the grant, we've been able to get this. And, uh, we are still working things out. Um, but we plan on having a training for our principals and administrators this summer. And we hope to be one hundred percent digital with our application process by July. We also use some of the funds to help with test fees. Some of the tests that our teachers have to take cost approximately two hundred dollars. And we have some teachers that are in our PACE programs and some of our other programs that you received information on earlier. And throughout these programs, they have to take that last exam, which is the PLT. And as I said, it costs about two hundred dollars. So we were able to help with some of the fees for that test. We also have some certified teachers that wanted to add different areas of certification. They can do that by passing a test. So we were able to take care of some of those fees. And for some of our newer teachers, we were able to take care of registration fees for them to start their application portal because that's a hundred and thirty-five dollars. And they also have to pay for the background check. So we were able to help with some of those fees. We were able to put a hundred and three thousand dollars toward critical needs areas to supplement or assist with the bonuses for teachers. So that was a very good thing. And if necessary, we are going to add signing bonuses for individuals who specialize in critical need subjects such as math, science, special ed. We haven't done that yet, but that's one thing we hope to be able to do in the future. We also use the funds to enhance our induction and mentoring programs. This year for induction, we were able to offer a book study and were able to actually have the author to come down to meet with the induction teachers. It was Annette Bro. And her book is One Hundred Answers for New Teachers and Their Mentors. Not only did they do the book study, but she came down and presented her materials and she also took questions. Because, you know, sometimes you read things in books and that sounds great and fine, but trying to get that to go into real life can sometimes be difficult. So she did two sessions for us and I think it was a good thing for our teachers and our mentors. And we were also able to add twenty new mentors. And our mentors worked with our new teachers, also with our seasoned teachers, to assist them as they helped to move kids forward. We did some work with professional development. We provided district PD. The mini-course we provided was entitled Engaging and Reaching Struggling Learners. And one big thing that we were able to do was we were able to offer a thousand dollar grant to any teachers that were planning on purchasing or building a home in Lawrence County. And we gave out twelve of those grants. So we feel that all these things will help us not only recruit teachers, but also help to retain them in our district. All right, now, let's get on to the other part, the vacancies. Right now, in the district, we have thirteen teacher vacancies. We have five elementary, we have three middle level, and we have five secondary vacancies. Now, when we look at our reasons for teachers leaving, which obviously created these vacancies, outside of retirement, the top three reasons were moving closer to home, especially this year. We had some teachers that we hired that were from out of state and we had a few that we hired that were from another part of the state. And I think COVID may have hit them pretty hard, so they decided to go closer to home. A few others were to stay home with a baby, understandable. And then unfortunately, one of the others was due to teacher salaries. But I do need to add that Lawrence Fifty-Fives is competitive with our salary. Now, we do need to do some things with regard to catching up the step, but our hands are tied to a certain extent because we're under estate freeze. So all those things combined, I think, is why so some people feel as though they would have a higher salary going to another district. Okay, I think that concludes my report. Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mann. At this time, if Dr. Penlin would please come and share information regarding the calendar modification.
Good evening. Um, one of the things that we did this year was started the school year three weeks later than normal. Um, with that, we also have, um, teacher workdays built in the system. And the last two teacher workdays are the nineteenth and twenty-first of June. With the nineteenth and twenty-first being teacher workdays, we opened up our system to allow for more flex days to where teachers could earn those days back with doing professional development earlier in the year. So by doing that, we have very little time to close out the school as one of those things. And one of the things was also it's later in June, everybody's used to being out. So what we'd like to propose today is change the sixteenth and seventeenth of June to what's called early release days. These early release days would allow students to get out two and a half early hours early, um, with the eighteenth being a half day, which is three and a half hours early. In our approved calendar, we're only allowed to have three half-days legally in our system. So that would be the day before our winter break, the day before spring break, and the day, the last day of school are our three kind of legal days that are half-days. The state does provide, um, opportunities to do like professional development and opportunities to do a shortened school day. So that's what we've done in the past with, um, what we call the blue days for our, um, professional development, early dismissal days. So that's what we're proposing to do, um, with this, and that would allow our teachers a little bit more time to be summer-ready with their classrooms because we have a lot of summer programs that Dr. Harris just reported on that will be starting shortly after school closes. So, um, our proposal is that the sixteenth and seventeenth become early release days for students. That would be two and a half hours early dismissal with the eighteenth staying as the last half-day for student. And this would require board action to allow us to do this.
Dr. Penlin, how many early release days are we allowed by the state, or is that mandated in any way?
It's not mandated in any way. Um, we have the opportunity to kind of build those in based on, um, having seat hours whenever we go through the normal school year. Um, seat time has been waived this year whenever we look at the number of hours, um, based on each course and that kind of thing throughout the school year. So we, um, could probably do more than this, but this would be just our recommendation to start off with.
I mean, I've shared this before, but I think, you know, I know we made a decision at the beginning of the school year based on the information we had at the time. Um, I know our students are tired and our teachers and staff and administrators, they walk around with their head held high and a smile on their face every day, but I know they're tired as well. Um, and I wish there was something we could do that full week of June fourteenth.
We did reach out to the state to, um, see if we could go e-learning some of those days and actually move those to earlier in the school year. Um, they did deny that because of the new law of the requirement for the five full days. Um, so they could not allow us to go to remove those five days to e-learning, kind of move them earlier in the year. So they did not allow that, um, but they, the early release days are kind of at our discretion.
So could that fourteenth and fifteenth be an early release day as well?
It could be.
And what would the-
I'm going to ask one question of Dr. Brink, just to make sure we don't mess up anything testing-wise.
Okay.
Do you know of anything that would interfere with testing? I want to make sure AP's done and-
AP's finished. Doc's for six.
Make-up testing, but those would be hours that they could do that.
Would there be any other drawbacks to do that?
Um, our only concern is childcare in the afternoons for those parents that may not have the opportunity to, um, ha- get access to their kids midday. Um, that was the only other drawback that we... I can't remember if there was anything else we discussed, Dr. Thomas, drawback-wise.
Dr. Thomas, what are your thoughts?
Basically, when we submitted the proposal, um, to the State Department, they emphasized the importance of the fact that, um, just instruction and learning and how that has been, um, what we have all emphasized and, and really just emphasized in heart from the very beginning. So that was one of their reasons why they would not approve that last week, just for the basis of getting out early, um, just because of the academic recovery needs and just the learning loss. So the only other thing we talked about in addition to that would also be, um, I know that some schools have planned events such as their awards day and those type things. So with scheduling, because we had not discussed that with them previously, uh, the fourteenth and fifteenth. So that would be the only other things that we would have to adjust.
I know that we all aspire to have proper instruction through the last day of school. You know, our seniors are already going to be out as of June the fourth. Um, AP exams, I think, are finished up this week. Um, so we've kind of put our teachers in a position to create things for our students to do, um, by when we made the decision to extend the school, ex- you know, delay the start of school by two weeks.
And we do have our schools, I'm sorry, but our schools have definitely planned very intentional and strategic things to do to where it's not just busy work or wasted time. So we definitely emphasize that with our, um, administrators and instructional coaches as well, that, you know, this is not just time for busy work, but we need very intentional, high-quality, um, activities and lessons to take place during that time as well.
And when do Chromebooks have to be taken up?
The Chromebooks, I think, for e-learning are, um, the sixteenth, um, which would be that Wednesday. They're doing a drop-off that day. Um, I think the schools are taking them up the eleventh, if I'm not mistaken, for, um, to allow the media specialists to get those taken up before the virtual, um, kids bring theirs in the following two days later.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept a change in the calendar as presented by Dr. Penlin.
Well, we have to, is there any further discussion?
You're supposed to have a motion first, then have a discussion as a point of view.
That's fine, is there any discussion?
I'll make a second.
Okay. Um, we, all right, we have a motion on the table to approve the changes in the calendar. Um, as Dr. Penlin has presented them for half, or excuse me, early dismissal days on the sixteenth and the seventeenth. All those in favor? That's majority and the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Penlin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penlin. Um, this concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Dr. Harris, it looks like you're up again.
Um, I've been asked to bring you policy EBCB, Safety Plans and Drills, for first reading. And this policy is based on this Model Fire and Safety Program Guidelines for South Carolina School Districts and Charter Schools. It's dated April of two thousand twenty. Anybody remembers April of two thousand twenty, that there was an awful lot going on at that particular time? So this thing has gotten a little bit put off, um, in this last year. And so we're, we're here now to consider this, this policy. And I just want to mention one particular part of this. As I went through this, we do almost all of this now. Um, the, the one thing that we, that's going to be a big change for us is on the first page of this, uh, of this policy where it says, it talks about assessment. As you read through this, the assessment in schools become much more, um, stringent under this, under these guidelines that, that we see. And so there will be, there would have to be monthly inspections of schools. Now, I pulled the, I pulled the, the inspection checkoff list. It's thirty-seven items, okay? Fire, fire marshals made this up and this is a, this is a very intense inspection. So we'll have some work to do on this as far as, um, having the expertise to start with to be able to do that. Um, but this will be a big job and, and we'll have to, we'll have to figure out exactly how we're going to do this. I also wanted to mention before, um, while I'm up here, I wanted to mention we, we received a, an email this morning from the State Department from Kim Smith and it says, "I wanted to share, I wanted to briefly follow up on S seven oh nine. As I mentioned before, we requested a waiver to have the Model Fire and Safety Policy Due Date extended to July two thousand twenty-two. A memo will be going out to District Superintendents tomorrow with updates related to this request." So this thing is, is being pushed even more now. Dr. Thomas will be able to report to you exactly where it stands once this information comes back. But, um, as we look at it, it, it's going to come, it's going to be here, and we need a policy and we need to be getting ready to be able to implement, but it looks like it's, we're still going to have some time, um, to be able to get all this done. And I think probably districts around the state are in the same boat where, where there's a lot of people who just are not, if people are realizing they're probably not ready for all that this entails. Um, but we, we are in a good place with regard to our safety plans and drills. Again, as I read through this, I feel good about almost all of this, but the new part is something we'll have to, we'll have to get ready for. So I present this to you for first read.
Do you think we will have a lot of deficiencies if we don't get the corrections done prior to?
Well, it's not really corrections as much as it is just a more, you know, right now, we have SCISBIT come in, um, that they bring, the, the people we get our insurance from, they come in and do some inspections for us. They, they'll do a couple of schools a year and so they'll be in those schools twice during the year we do that. We have our law enforcement go in, law enforcement and first responders. We, we didn't do it this year because of COVID. We have them go through all of our schools during the year and, and, and know them and know something about every school and, and we talk about responses. We have a really good relationship with first responders and law enforcement here in Lawrence, Lawrence County, and, um, and they help us an awful lot. So we have them, we have the structure, the infrastructure to get this done, but a thirty-seven, you, you got to have a lot of fire expect- uh, fire expertise, um, to be able to go through this checklist and do it with fidelity. You, you can't just send anybody in to do this. Dr. Penlin and I have talked about, um, some things that we might do in, in order to, to get ready for this and be prepared. But it's, um, I can, I can share it with you or you can go to that, um, you can go to the, to the policy, the guidelines and, and look at that. It's, it's pretty, a pretty heavy document as far as the inspections are concerned.
Um, will it inhibit any of the daily operations of the schools to do that assessment?
No, I don't think so.
Dr. Harris, this, um, we, of course, these policies come to us through the South Carolina School Board Association and they, they provide kind of a template and they provide wording for the policies. Um, have, have you had the opportunity or anyone on your team to determine in that assessment if that's the piece that is most concerning to you? Is, is that the wording that is a must that we use or is there, are there some leeways in there that we could discuss at the next reading?
I, I think the, I think this is going to be pretty much what the law's going to expect.
Okay.
So I, I don't see this, this part of it changing at all.
Okay.
We're, we're going to have to get to where we can do this inspection, um, in all of our schools on a monthly basis.
Okay.
And that's a lot of work.
It is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess it's part of safety, so that's why we need it.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Penlin?
I bring to you second reading of the staff health. And remember, this, um, re- request for approval for policy GBGA, staff health, um, ties to the tuberculosis test for new hires and the COVID-nineteen vaccine. So those, um, participants of the vaccination are not to kind of take the tuberculosis test within four weeks of that administration after their final dose. So they recommend that we have changed our policy to allow staff to continue to be hired even though they may not have passed their tuberculosis test until four weeks after their vaccination. But the date that they are to take their tuberculosis test is four weeks after that test, so they would sign a statement, um, to have that test done once their four weeks is up. So this is for, um, second reading. Um, do you have any questions before we need board action on this one?
Had some, just not in the heart, I guess, maybe, do we have discussion now or a motion?
He asked for questions, so you could take off with your question.
My main question is not about the edits that's been proposed, but why the later part of this, this same policy goes into quite a bit of, uh, privacy details around HIV that's not applied to anything else. I, I think that really this and quite a few of our other policies needs a real thorough going through. And this is one of them, kind of the first one that came up, that has a lot of stuff that's focused on one particular issue.
Right.
And our policies, I think, need to be much, much higher level and mu- broader than that, uh, a little more sustainable from one year to the next and not focused on every individual issue.
Right.
And so that's where, that's where I would challenge.
Okay. And, and we brought the changes due to the section that was recommended to us by the School Boards Association.
Understand.
But if there is something that we want to go back and revise again, um, if we could, I mean, approve this part and then bring it back up for another reading to, um, be able to go ahead and pass it so we can be legal in our hiring processes with the tuberculosis test, then we can come back and revise it at a later date.
Dr. Penlin, would that mean we need to move it to a third reading or would you like it approved as is and then we revisit it at another time?
Um, third reading would be in June. That would still allow us to hire if you wanted to have a work session to make those changes between now and then, but it would be kind of timing to be able to get that in before hiring happens. Um, it would be personal preference to go ahead and approve it and then bring it back up, um, when we have a board work session with multiple documents at one time that we could work through.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, Dr. Penlin has brought to us a second reading for a vote for policy GBGA on staff health. Um, if we could have a motion?
I make a motion to approve board policy GBGA, staff health.
Second.
All those in favor? That's a hundred percent, Lisa, and the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Penlin. Okay, now we are going to look at, um, policy ADD for face coverings based on the past, um, couple of weeks, and there's been quite the discussion about face coverings. We did consult with the district attorneys and we were able to provide opt-out forms for both students and for staff at this point. And so with this particular policy and it stating that we require face coverings, um, it doesn't align with what we're actually doing, uh, in the district right now. So we need to, um, we need to possibly, um, suspend this policy.
So I'll make a motion to suspend policy ADD face covering until further notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Discussion.
Do we have some discussion?
I do, I do. And it's just because even, we've, we've already violated the policy because we put into place, and I already, I like the opt-out sheets that we had. I know some places are not doing them, some places have none as far as, um, some and it's very minimum compared to ours, but I like the part of the liability. And if we suspend it, how long will it be before we revisit this just because people today, liability is an issue and people today don't mind suing anybody for anything and I wouldn't want this to be one of them, just in case. And we've had an outbreak at Sanders that we see and, you know, and getting some of the feedback that we have gotten from parents as it regards children being separated or segregated among themselves. I feel that sometimes the teacher may have some, um, a condition which may affect them and that's not saying why, but sometimes it could be, I don't know. Saying that, I just wondered how long would this be suspended? And I feel like we need to have something in place for students as well as parents, I mean, students as well as ourselves, because we've already opened up the meeting and we had, um, meeting before as far as registering to get here and all those kinds of things. So when you're looking at one, you got to look at it all because it all encompasses together. That being said, we need something in place instead. We, we, we really do. And, you know, truth be told, I would rather have waited till the first, till the end of school year, but as it is, and like I said, I do like our opt-out policy for staff. Um, you know, there are just a lot of legal ramifications behind this as well.
The unfortunate part is that due to the governor's comments, um, and then, uh, his actions for the executive order, that really didn't leave us a choice to wait till the end of the year.
But at least until we met, whether it was on phone conference, uh, meeting, on the phone or what have you, because I felt like it was a little premature in the beginning because we had a policy in place and basically that's part of what we do. We live and die by policies that we set. So we were actually in violation of what we had.
Well, the governor's executive order was specifically for students in the schools. And, and then, um, the Department of Education rescinded their mask mandate. Um, so that allowed for the students to, for us to go ahead and provide the opt-out form for the students.
They provided the form for the student too, right.
As far as the staff was concerned, um, Dr. Thomas- As far as the staff was concerned, um, Dr. Thomas and I spoke about that on the phone one day. I very much wanted the staff to have an opt-out option as well. And that is when I called every board member to have that discussion, and I actually talked to everyone except for you, Ms. Ware. I wasn't able to get you on the phone. That was the, that was that Friday to Sunday situation where I think you were out of town or handling some, you know, we weren't able to talk. So because there was a majority of the board that said, I'm okay with, with Dr. Thomas sending that out, that's why we went ahead and sent out that, um, for the staff to have that opt-out option as well. So right now, we have, we have opt-out options for staff and students, and that doesn't align with our policy. Um, I, I don't, I mean, I'm open to some sort of date, but I don't know, I wouldn't even know what date to choose, so.
From, from listening to Ms. Ware, I think her biggest concern as the district is, is the liability. What's our liability? Have you spoken with any of the attorneys on the liability?
Let me just read, let me read you a few things that, that we have, that I have here in writing from, from the attorneys. Um, it says, if we want to allow students and staff to not wear masks under the opt-out options, we feel this is best accomplished by the board passing a motion to suspend the policy for the remainder of the year. Um, and there's, you know, we, it references another policy that allows us to temporarily suspend a policy. Um, here, they say, the reason for the opt-out form is to protect the district from potential future liability. The South Carolina COVID-19 Immunity Act provides liability protection for COVID-19-related lawsuits for entities that follow public health guidance. Even though the, the governor's order is against public health guidance in schools, it states that the governor's order does reduce the district's liability protect, or reduces the liability from the COVID-related lawsuits. Um, so at the end of the day, the attorneys are saying that potentially, yes, there's still a liability with the, even with the opt-out forms, there's still a liability. But the likelihood that it would actually come to fruition is slim to none. Um, and that's, slim to none is not their word, slim to none is my words. Um, it says, we believe this may reduce the liability production that schools allow, that schools now enjoy under the Immunity Act. However, we acknowledge that the risk of lawsuits based on claims that attendance at school exposed a person to COVID may be limited. There's numerous problems with such, you know, with such type lawsuits. I mean, how do you, how do you prove that? Did you touch a doorknob? Did you, you know, did you wash your hands?
Back to contact tracing, those kinds of things.
Those are the things, like, you know, how could you trace back where you got the flu from? You know, did you touch a shopping cart at the grocery store type thing? So, um, the feeling is that the liability is limited. Um, Dr. Thomas, I know you spoke with them as well. I'd welcome you to share anything if you would like, but if you don't, that's okay too.
Now, that is basically the information from the email that was sent to me from the attorneys. So that there is a possibility of liability, and that they do recommend to have something in place to try to help protect the district. Their main thing was just the protection of the district.
Now, I would agree with protection of the district, but where I had the heartburn was with the verbiage in actually both versions of the employee opt-out form that not only protected the, the district, but passed the legal liability right to the employees, which I, I think was, was not right.
But I hope everybody goes by the good old honor system, because we know a lot of people don't, you know, as far as saying double vaccinated or what have you. Some people will and some people won't. So we have to trust that they'll do the right thing, or, you know, if they've done it, you know, if they've actually had that.
And just for the record, the attorneys created the opt-out form. So that was something that was produced by legal counsel.
God, sing that way. What's the, what's the downside to just leaving the policy in place as it is? Is there, is there cross lines there?
Well, the reason that they, it's because the, it's because what we're actually allowing right now is against the policy.
Does, does the, does the governor's executive order, which becomes law, not supersede the policy in the first place?
Uh, I don't think we could legally have a policy in place that was against the governor's executive order or against a law. The end of the policy does state, um, to the extent this policy does not align, this policy will supersede others in accordance with applicable laws and regulations in effect at that time. So, I mean, we, we could read that to say that this policy isn't in effect because it doesn't align with what the governor is saying. They offered the option to or not enforce it for the remainder of the year.
Through conversations, they also said that there's a, um, the possibility, of course, for you all to amend the policy.
And we could do that as well.
Could we not just amend the policy to cover both? Wear a face mask, don't wear a face mask. If you don't, use the opt-out form. But yet it still carries the verbiage to cover those who want to wear a mask?
Yes, we can, we can, we can reword the policy or edit the policy.
And I always think about future strains. Hopefully and preferably, we won't have any, but we don't ever know.
Well, and that's why we.
We don't ever know. And see, with that brewing over at Sanders, that too is just, you know, they had twenty, about twenty students, staff over at Sanders. So I'm quite sure there are going to be little pockets here, there, and yonder, even before, hopefully not, before school's out, possibly. We don't ever know.
I took a swing at marking it up, and again, the same type thing here is, let's not focus it on just COVID, because really, you know, you hate for a policy to be that, that specific. It ought to say to reduce the spread of any respiratory communicable disease. Staff should have the option to wear a mask if they feel like that helps.
And that's something we can do, you know, but it's just a matter of, but to, to, to just do away with it. I would rather not say, well, suspend it altogether, at least kind of say, you know, based on what the governor has said to, you know, as far as liability, the opt-out form, like, um, trustee Patterson just said something to that effect.
I would accept an amendment to, to my motion to say we'll suspend policy ADD until this one is revised, and we'll commit to revise that between now and the beginning of, uh, the school year next year.
Can we, since we have one more meeting left, correct? In June? Could we move to, uh, table this and hold a work session between now and then to revise the policy and amend it during that meeting instead of this one?
Sounds good to me.
Well, I think we either need to suspend it, and then we can revisit it and put it back into play at another, at the next meeting, um, or we need to just amend it tonight because we are, we're working outside of the policy right now. Um, and I have no preferences.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Varner, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, if I may, um, to change the policy tonight, um, would that have had to be?
Yes.
Um, advertised as board action was going to be taken on it?
It is advertised as board action.
Let's suspend it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
But thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I was looking at something.
No, no, it's fine.
You can get sued for anything. It don't, this is me.
Well, there's a motion on the table, so let's vote on that, and then depending on how that goes, we will have to keep going.
And I think the motion on the table is to suspend ADD, policy ADD face coverings until it is revised, which we will commit to be by the beginning of the 21, 22 school year.
Mr. Patterson, you would second that, that motion? Is that acceptable?
I'm still second, yeah. Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of Mr. Varner's motion to suspend policy ADD until it's revised and that be, the new policy being placed by the start of the school year? All those in favor? Raise your hand. All right, so Ms. Lisa, we have five in favor, and all those opposed.
And I'd just rather see it amended. I would like to record, reflect, just to see it amended for right now, even though it's being suspended, I'd rather see an amendment.
And that's what our motion was, that it would be amended.
But it's suspended, placed, depending on an amendment. It's suspended, so there's nothing there as was, I can see, but I understand what you're saying. But I'd rather see an amendment based on what the governor's ordered versus a suspension based on what the governor's ordered.
And we, we will get there.
Right. So noted, Ms. Wilson, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so the motion passes, and we've suspended policy ADD. Um, oh, looks like I have something else to do here. Okay, so we have our 2021, 2022 schedule of monthly board meetings. They're on your agenda. It looks like they would still take place right here in this room and on our normal meeting dates throughout the year. So we do need to take board action in order to approve this schedule. So if I could have a motion from someone?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rawl. All those in favor? All right, so we have six in favor, all those opposed. We have one opposed, the motion carries.
Give me a chance to discuss, but can I now?
Oh, I apologize.
I would like to see the November meeting moved into December. This year it doesn't matter as much, but I think going forward, we need to not have that November board meeting until after December 1st.
I agree with you, and that's going to require policy change that we need to address. Yeah.
Why is that? Why so?
Because you basically have a lame duck board making decisions.
No, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly why.
Yeah, that definitely needs to be amended.
But that would require a policy change to do that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But that's not on, in every year, that's not every year.
That's why this year.
It's every two, four, two years for every, you know, it's not every year, so.
This matters to an election year.
And again, you know, Mr. Kaufman is here, Ms. Kathy Little's here, I'm here, you know, and Mike is here. So it's four of those lame ducks previously. We've talked about that before, so. Four of those seven.
Okay, uh, we're moving on to finance and operations, and we have Mr. Jim Wallace.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe each of you have received a copy of the financial report for April of 2021. Our balance with the treasurer's office at, of the end of, uh, is it, as of the end of April was $3,135,583, and that cash balance is significantly lower than we were at this time last year, in addition being lower than our trending balance the last, uh, for this current year. We have been submitting, uh, to the Department of Education for reimbursements for several major federal programs and should have helped to alleviate this situation, and some of those have already been received so far during the month of May. Our fiscal year-to-date general fund revenues for the first, uh, ten months were $40,115,591, uh, with expenses for that same period of $36,753,577, for a difference of $3,362,014. And that puts us just a little over $2 million ahead of where we were at this point last year, and that will be partially offset by the bonuses that were approved by the board and paid on May 5th. Uh, tax collections for the month of April were $1,186,479. Anybody have any questions about that before we proceed?
Um, the balance with the treasurer, why such a large difference?
Well, as I explained, we have several large federal programs underway, and in order to receive funding, you have to spend the money first and then request reimbursement. So we are, we have requested reimbursement, and we have received some of that already during the month of May. We should be receiving more. Any more? Okay. Uh, this afternoon, the board met for a budget workshop to discuss the general fund budget for the year in the June 30th, 2022. In its current form, that budget is balanced with general fund revenues and expenditures totaling $49,408,131. There is no anticipated tax increase to the local taxpayers, but again, there is no budgeted surplus or contingency built into that budget. Anyone have anything else to add to that update as well? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Dr. Harris?
This is, uh, this is one minute and questions. EB Morse, this summer operations, some of our bigger jobs going on this summer. EB Morse Roofing Project starts June 22nd. Sanders Middle School Security Entrance Work starts June 22nd. That'll be a pretty big job, and, um, that'll be a nice addition once we get that done. Roof inspections will take place. We'll be prioritizing our next roofing projects through, um, building management consultants that'll be coming in in June. We have an LED lighting project at our, at what we call our Duke Schools, um, and we're waiting on the energy office to give us a go-ahead on that. We've got a contractor in place, we're ready to go just as soon as we get the okay. Um, we're having discussions about S3 monies, talking specifically about Sanders and, and the need for a science, for science labs over there similar to what we had at Warren's Middle. That is a priority for us and, and really first in line is, in terms of buildings. Um, and then just basic summer maintenance, um, will be going on through our maintenance department. Questions about any of those? Yes, sir?
Just because I haven't, wasn't involved, was the Sanders security look like, or is that blocking off the road there completely?
Yeah, we, when you walk into Sanders, you have access to student hallways immediately, and out a back door to more, to more student areas. It just wasn't an easy way to fix it, so it's going to require, um, some pretty extensive renovations. So we're flipping the office so we can have secretaries near the door, um, and then we'll have a, a secure entrance and a little vestibule there where they'll come in and, and they'll have, people will have to be buzzed into the hallway now instead of just, um, walking in and, and being able to go anywhere.
So all the renovations are inside the current footprint?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. No questions? Okay, thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Dr. Harris. Uh, that concludes our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, yes, we do.
All those in favor? All right, the motion passes. Thank you all for being here.
Who made the second?